Mammell City Council meeting to order, Councilmember Mosley notified us earlier this afternoon that he will not be in attendance tonight, so he is not going to be here. And at this time, I'll lead us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're mindful of Independence Day, Lord, that we have servicemen and women that have served our country, Lord, and have given us our rights and freedoms, Lord, and we continue to have servicemen and women that continue to serve and protect our country and protect those rights so that we can shoot fireworks tomorrow, Lord, and so that we can go out and celebrate our independence, Lord. We'd also ask you to be with the victims of the Little Rock shooting that took place over the weekend, Lord. We'd ask you to be with just the citizens, Lord, and to have them have more civility and let's get along with one another, Lord, and have less violence, Lord. I mean, gun battles are not the way to settle arguments, Lord, so we'd ask that your wisdom intervene and give the leaders that are dealing with this situation the wisdom that it takes to overcome that and be with our leaders throughout all of our communities, Lord, and help us to be more civil toward one another and have discussions and not arguments and disagreements, Lord. We ask that you be with us as we conduct the city's business here tonight, Lord, give us wisdom and go with us as we leave here and help us to do something that is pleasing on your side and helpful to someone that we come in contact with, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have no special guests or announcements tonight. Next item is approval of the minutes of the June 19 regular meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packet?
Do you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of Judea the 19th. Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Holt?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one quick follow-up question. Last meeting, Alderman Vaprazan referred to the dates on the Crystal Hill item, and you said that we were still under a three-year timeline. Just wondering, when did that timeline start, if you don't mind me asking?
January 2013.
January 2013, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There's no other discussion, is there? Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I have no public comment cards. Four items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Next item is financial statement review. We normally do that at the second meeting of each month, but because we got behind, we actually have the May financials on the agenda for tonight, and those were sent out by separate email by the city clerk on Friday. And are there any questions on the financials for the month of May? And at the last meeting, there was some discussion about where we stood on County Village, and if you look at the reporting for May, it went up tremendously, and that's what I was saying, is that we collect most of that in May, so it's a little over a million dollars right now, which is 300,000 over what the five-month budget shows for it. There's no questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the financials.
I move.
We have a motion and a second to approve the financials for May. Is there any discussion on that motion or any questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is procedural motion. We need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have the third reading of ordinance number 936, which is a smoking ban on walking paths and trails owned by the city. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 936, an ordinance prohibiting smoking on city walking trails.
Do you approve ordinance 936?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 936. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next item is the third reading of ordinance number 937, amending chapter 46 of the Mammell City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 937, amending chapter 46 of the Mammell City Code.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept ordinance 937.
We have a motion and a second to accept ordinance number 937. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam Clerk, please roll call vote.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor, can we get the signs changed that are existing, say feet, just change them to yards?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
They won't go into effect for 30 days, so, yeah.
That gives us plenty of time to change two letters.
Okay. Also, and I was under the impression that the council member, council form of government law went into effect July 1, it actually goes into effect August 1, so we're gonna keep practicing for another month, is what we're gonna do.
Oh, okay.
So, we still got another month.
Charles Casey and Alderman for a minute.
For another month, but after that, we gotta get it right after that, so. Next item is the third reading of ordinance number 938, amending chapter 94 of the zoning regulations. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 938, an ordinance amending chapter 94 zoning regulations of the Mammell City Code to account for amendment 98 of the Arkansas Constitution.
Do you approve ordinance 938?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 938. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business, the first order of new business is Resolution 2017-18 acknowledging and approving terms of a Title VI program. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number 2017-18, a resolution acknowledging and approving the terms of the Title VI program benefiting the senior citizen transportation assistance program and authorizing the mayor to execute applicable program documents and for other purposes.
Do you want to approve Resolution 2017-18, if you wanna tell us why we're doing this again?
I'll let the city attorney tell you why.
Thank you.
Second.
Well, it's motion and a second, is there any discussion, and the question's been asked to explain what this is about.
Thirty pages.
Yeah, so, the Title VI program is what, this is coming through senior wellness, and it deals with the transportation that we get, and of course, I think most, if not all of the vans are funded through grants. We're currently under a Title VI, they made a few changes in there, and then they asked us to update it. And so it's just basically remaining under this program that allows us to continue to use the vans and shuttles and buses that senior wellness uses.
What's the frequency of every new, if I may ask?
Well, this, the actual program we were under was through 2021, was that correct? Or 20?
It was through beyond where we are right now.
Right, it was beyond this, but they made some changes, so they asked us to adopt the changes, is what they asked. And it normally, it's normally three to five years out that you wouldn't have to do this again. But basically, it's to nondiscrimination through our transportation program.
Sure.
It's what we're agreeing to, and so it's, the vans that we have all come through the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department, which just changed its name to Arkansas Department of Transportation, so it's gonna be another thing to try to get through. But the funding to do that comes from the federal government, so we have to adopt this in order to comply with the federal government's rules and regulations.
So they supply us the vans themselves rather than the money?
Well, we purchase the vans and they pay 80% of the price and we pay 20% of the price. And then we have to use the vans as transportation, in this case for citizens over 50 years of age.
I need a ride somewhere.
You have to be a member of the center also, so.
And they don't count as discriminatory if you have to be a member?
No, no, because that's how the program is set up and run, yeah, yeah. And we don't provide, you know, we don't provide transportation with the vans to the medical appointments and all that, we do that with the other cars that were purchased with just transportation dollars and all that, or with our dollars, the city dollars.
And it's volunteer mostly, isn't it?
That does the driving, yes, sir, yeah. And we do do around-the-town shuttle, but that's also, you have to be a member in order to do that. But you can have rules, you just can't discriminate based on various, the different, yeah, protected classes. So, but you, you know, being a member, and you, there is not, there's not necessarily a fee to be a member, there is, but you can get scholarships to help pay for it if you can afford it. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to make it crystal clear, so there's no bad assumptions made, to my knowledge, and the mayor can verify this, I don't think there's, we've had any complaints, we just do not discriminate in our senior centers, so I don't want anyone thinking that something's happened.
No, we were required by the Federal Transportation Department to do this. Now, I'm not gonna say we didn't get any complaints, but we ain't got any complaints as they relate to discrimination, so.
Well, I understand, yes.
Yeah.
When there's.
And Ms. Vogler is now here, and, yeah, we're actually discussing it, so the question was just to ask, I mean, we're not aware of any complaints that we've had regarding Title VI, right?
No, sir, there have not been any that I'm aware of. It's just required by law for the three vehicles that we have on grant, the three big vans that we have, well, two big vans, one ramp van.
Okay, just while I've got you trapped here, 'cause I can't ever get you when I'm over there, it seems like, you just stay busy all the time. What's the status on our second new ramp van, our second new van?
We just got it, it's a transit van, it's very nice, in fact, the clerk's office helped us get it licensed so we can take it around, and I think they took it on its first field trip Friday.
They did, now, is that the lift van that lifts from the rear?
It is, it's a 11-passenger with up to two wheelchairs, so it could go, I believe, two-wheelchair and eight other passengers, so it's a, it's a nice versatile vehicle, and they also like it because they actually took it on a medical run today in the paratransit client, very much enjoyed it as well.
But that's the one that's replacing the old ramp van?
Uh, well, it's one that's really, it's not really replacing, it's one that's in addition. At some point, we, either we're gonna have some pretty hefty repair bills for the shuttle van or look to replace it, we've got a mold issue, it's in the headliner, it's a, the shuttle van is a vehicle that's been tore apart, put back together, and we've had some leaks, and we can't seem to figure out where the leaks are throughout the years, or if we'll fix it within a couple of years, the leaks come back, and so we've either gotta take, we've either got some extensive repairs to do or look to replace depending on cost, and it's a 2007.
Okay, thank you.
And I do apologize, I didn't think y'all would be on the business.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
I wanted to ask our senior services head about how things are going and where we're at with membership, as we spoke earlier.
Great.
Wanted to let you toot your horn.
Well, and I'm excited to say, as of Friday, we were at 11:08 for members, we had eight new members join this morning, or today, so we're at 11:16, so that's 1,116 members before, it is amazing. Before we opened the beautiful new center, we were just around 500, so to be, and every year, we start at zero and add up, so last year, we were close to 800 by the end of the year, to be at over 1,100 before July, that's pretty amazing, we're very, very happy, very excited, thank you.
Congratulations, Nicole.
Thank you, it is very exciting, and, you know, I work with a very talented staff, being open from 5:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night, you can't be there all hours of the day, but, so we have a really great staff and really great volunteers, we couldn't do it without the community.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, as if there's not any more discussion. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2017-18, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vogler. Moving on to mayor's comments, I included a copy of the fireworks rules and regulations in the packet, just for everybody's refresher course there, the, and also to talk about Fourth Fest that goes on tomorrow. So, we'll do Fourth Fest first, basically the parade, we are having the parade, there was some concern, we didn't have enough entries to have it, but we are gonna have it, it'll start at 4:30, and then all festivals will move to Lake Willistee, which the parade ends at Lake Willistee, it'll start at Audubon, go down Millwood, and turn onto Club Manor, and then turn into the lake itself. 5:00 at the festival starts at Lake Willistee, 5:30 is the cardboard boat race sponsored by the Mammell Area Chamber of Commerce. At 6:15, they'll be presenting the parade awards, at 6:20, there will be tutus and tennis shoes performance at the stage, at 6:40, they'll be handing out the cardboard boat race awards, and then at 7:50, we'll start the musical part with the, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the National Anthem, and then at 8:00, the music is provided by T.J. Ashley and the Backroad Band, and then at 9:30, we'll have the fireworks show to end the fourth. So, everything is on target, there's a forecast of a little bit of rain showers, but we can dodge those and get it all in, I think, so. If it's not lightning, I'm sure everything will go on as planned, even if it does rain a little bit. And then on the fireworks, if you feel like somebody's doing something wrong, tell the citizens to call the police department, they will do everything they can to get there, but the problem is, when the calls start coming in, they come in faster than the officers can respond to them. So, it's a matter of, you know, we may get there and the act that they were doing that was wrong is done, or they're not doing it anymore, let's say there was 50 people there and half of them leave, well, now they got a group less than 25, when the officer shows up, there's nothing the officer can do, as long as they're still within the hours of shooting the fireworks. The, seems like the biggest time that we start getting the most complaints is right at the 10:30 cutoff, so they'll start getting calls either, either right before they should stop, or even some people continue to shoot, to finish shooting off their fireworks, so, but the thing to do is call the police and let them handle it. We typically don't write tickets, we try to get people to comply, we give them a warning and ask them to comply with the rules and regulations, and inform them what those rules and regulations are, and if it's a repeat offender, then they might get a citation. Chief, did you want to add anything to that, or?
No, sir, that was it, I was talking to my officer before I came over here. You know, I know that we get quite a few complaints, and we should, we expect that, but I gotta be honest with you, there's people in Mammell are pretty compliant folks, they want to do the right thing, some of them let the time get away from them, some of them push you, but when we go by and say, hey, we gotta, we gotta quit, it's after 10:30, the huge majority of people stop at 10:30, I've noticed the last several years, at 10:30, it gets fairly quiet, and then it lingers around some, and we have to go tell some people it's after 10:30, but by and large, people here are friendly and work with this, they're ready to work. We've got some, you know, that may try to test us a little bit, but really, not many, I like the way that we seem to do the right thing.
Chief, I noticed, I'm sorry.
I was almost out of here.
Speaking of, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I noticed that they put up a sign this afternoon about personal fireworks in the park, are we gonna go ahead and close the gates also?
I don't think they'll close the gates, no, sir.
There's a big old banner.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good deal.
Yeah, I don't think we'll close the gates, I can find that out, but I don't know that we'll close the gates.
We'll have the barrier, I bet, there.
Well, he's talking about it, I think you're talking about it, Rolling Oaks.
Oh, 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 the Rolling Oaks, oh, okay, now that, I'm sorry, I went to Lake Willistee on you, and I did see the barrier at the soccer fields, too. I don't know, and that, I don't, I don't know the answer.
I don't know that we'll lock the gates, we, but they put the banners up, most years, they put them up at all of our parks, so they'll be at the baseball and the softball park, and they'll be at, because some people think that's a place to go shoot fireworks, and per our ordinance, you cannot shoot them in a city park.
Right, or on the city streets.
Well, on public streets.
Oh, wow, yeah.
I've already talked to the lady that, I forgot, it starts with a name, the street that's a private street, and they shoot fireworks on that street, and somebody calls and says it's a city street, and it's not, it's their street, so, she's already kinda given us a heads up on that, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And then there's been a couple of streets that already called and said, hey, we'll be calling tomorrow and complaining. Okay, got it, thank you.
Complaining in advance?
Absolutely, anticipating complaints.
I'll see if I can find out from the Parks and Rec Director and let you know, Councilmember Holt. If they close them, it'll probably be later in the day, but.
I didn't care, I just thought maybe it might swelch some of them going in there.
Right.
We could have daredevils going to try it out.
Well, and the problem is, somebody might want to actually go in and use the park for its intended purpose, too, so you don't want to block them out of there, so, yeah. And then the next item under mayor's comments is the Pine Forest Bypass Project, also known as Lake Point Place, so that's the connection roadway between Lake Point Place and Pine Forest around Mr. Poole's building, the bids, we received bids last month, well, actually now in May, and we've awarded the contract, and so Gene Summers Construction is supposed to start that project this week, so, they should, they had, they had 10 days from like last Thursday to get started, so we think they'll start this week, maybe Wednesday, so.
Without rain and all that, do you think they'll be done before school?
They have, no, well, they're gonna, they're gonna try to get done before school, they have 90 days to complete the project. Now, we don't have approval from the Highway Department to make the connection to the Boulevard yet, and we gotta go through the Planning Commission also, so we're gonna try to do that in the month of June, and then you'll see it, but we're gonna try to get the roadway done that connects the two schools, so.
Good.
So we're moving forward on that project, so if you start seeing clears, trees coming down, and I met with Mr. Poole last week about the project, he seems very excited that we're getting it started, so, yeah. And then the only other thing that I had that I added is Central Arkansas Water sent letters out to everybody, everybody should have gotten one at their house, if you didn't get one, I included a copy here, now, what you didn't get at your house was a copy of that bill that I received a copy of that last week, is, that's a sample bill that will be going out, but basically, the, what I, what the note, the, well, the most important news in here is the local office will close permanently on July the 21st, so the office that's over here on Lake Point Drive will close on August, or July the 21st, but they can still pay bills in Mammell at the Kroger or in North Rock at the Walmart, that's slightly wrong, but, so, you can pay your bills at Kroger, but no, so just, that's the letter that went out there, it does, the other interesting thing is, it says there will be, there will not be a water rate increase for 2017, so everybody ought to be happy to hear that.
Yeah, I'm happy to share that.
Councilmember Holt?
Just a personal experience, I paid an electricity bill at Kroger's, and assuming that it would just, I go up to Mayflower most of the time and pay it, and it goes through immediately, at any rate, I got a late notice, and so, I went back home and I was raising all kinds of heck, and she said, well, you have to be here three days in advance because it takes us three days to process it in order for it to get there on time, so I just wanted to make that statement that be aware of it and know what you're doing.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item is Planning Commission report, and there was no meeting in June, so we don't have one, any council members' comments? Councilmember Vaprazan?
Two quick comments, I just wanted to let everybody know that the 16th is my 50th birthday, and I know some of you were scrambling, wondering, you know, what do we get, and so I just wanted to ease your burden, if you go to Kroger and get the dollar creamy peanut butter, it satisfies, that's all I need. I didn't want you to, because some of you had asked, and I didn't want you to really, you know, go broke, it is my 50th, and you only have one, and so I just wanted to, you know, let you know that, you know, next meeting's in two weeks, and it'll be the day after my 50th birthday, and if you were wondering, I just wanted to, that's right, just kinda give you the heads up, as Jess would say. And second thing, I asked Mayor earlier about the renovations for City Hall, I thought he might comment on that.
We need to go up for an RFQ for the architects on the project, so Ms. Timmons and I had talked about that a while back, but we're gonna get that done this month, so we'll get the RFQ out and then solicit RFQs from architects to remodel City Hall. We were waiting on the senior wellness center to be completely out there, completely out of downstairs now, the biggest issue we're gonna have is somehow unloading a bunch of storage closets, that's gonna be the biggest issue we have to start the remodeling project, so, front half of this building is a closet.
Are we gonna review the plans prior to starting?
Uh.
In case we have suggestions, or?
Well, what I would, now, you're talking about review the plans prior to starting construction, or, well, what I would recommend is, we'll probably review the plans during a process, during the design phase, because I don't want to get to the construction phase and then start making changes, so, yeah, yeah.
I said that because I didn't know how much planning had been done already.
Well, there's been a little planning done, but it's, it was, there was not ever a thought of moving, the original planning for this building was that senior wellness would take over the downstairs and the upstairs portion directly above them, and City Hall would move toward the front of the building, so any planning that has been done has been based on that theory, and so, that theory is gone now, completely gone, so, and then the theory is courts would move to the bottom half where the senior wellness center was, and so we will kinda have to do some rethinking about that, what we do now, City Hall will remain on the upper part, there's no question about that, but the goal would be turn the front of the building around, so the front of the building is that direction, council chambers will be down in that direction somewhere, and be coming in from that way. So we hope to get the, we'll get those out this month, RFQs, and then hopefully have them back in August sometime, then make a selection and start moving forward with design.
What was our budget?
A little over 2 million, like 2.3 million, I believe is what it is, yeah, that's, that's a number out of my memory, so it may be close to that, but, it's over 2.
I had a couple of projects.
Yeah, all right. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make everybody aware of something that I was not aware of and just discovered recently, we have, we're selling off rental properties right now, and one of them is in Little Rock, and we put a new roof on it, and it was that person that told me about it, okay? What it is, is Entergy has an energy-saving program, and I was told that Entergy was faced with building like a billion-dollar plant to produce enough electricity for growing population and deteriorating houses, so they thought it would be cheaper under certain circumstances to come out and actually help you insulate your house. Now, at one. Now, at one time, they only paid a percentage of it, like eighty-twenty or something, now it's totally free. What you have to do is call Entergy, and you have to be, now, there are some requirements, one, you have to be an Entergy customer, two, your home has to be at least ten years old, and three, you have to have an energy audit done on your house. Now, the house that they just came and looked at, we did the energy audit, it took about two hours to do, it showed up with about twenty-seven hundred dollars worth of insulation and things that needed to be done. Energy is paying every penny of it, in fact, they're coming out Thursday to do it, so, and I don't think a lot of people know it, but it's quite a benefit, especially as many seniors as we have in Mammell, that can be a real benefit to them, so I'm trying to help get the word out about this, so if you're talking to people, you might mention it to them, so, okay?
Very good.
And I think even Ms. Heep says, ah.
Nope.
Nicole. I forgot, I think you're going to mention it over at the Senior Center, too, and that's great, that's great. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to find out how we're doing on our search for a financial director and HR director.
Well, I can speak to the finance director, we found the perfect candidate, if you will, made the offer, the offer was accepted, as of Friday, that candidate received an offer and rescinded their acceptance of the offer, and it came down to money, there, it was roughly about forty thousand dollars more than we were offering, and including a pretty generous incentive package, we went to our alternate candidate, same situation, money, we couldn't, we couldn't negotiate, the wiggle room, we just did not have, the mayor and I have actually had a discussion about that, to restrategize, come to you all with the plan of action, and, you know, keep plugging at it. HR director and the mayor would have to.
Well, let me say on that, we couldn't, I mean, we talked about coming back to the council to ask for more money, there's no way I'm going to come back and ask for forty thousand dollars, or even twenty thousand dollars in additional salary for a position, that'd make it the highest-paid position within the city and all that, so we're going to keep plugging away on that, try to find the candidate, but actually, you know, the first one was definitely, he got a bigger, better offer, the other one's actually, went to a different company, the second one's staying at the company he's at, but with some, I guess, different benefits, perks or whatever, so, so the, that's how that one worked out. Now, the HR director, I've narrowed it down to two candidates, basically, and just got to come down to which one I think is going to make the best choice now, one of them I know could start right away, I think the other one could, too, or fair, well, right away, within two weeks or something like that of notice or whatever, but we're real close to the HR director, if we can match the salaries that they're currently making or were making, so, and if it does, and even if it doesn't, we'll come back and ask the council, or at least give the council, you know, the decision that, well, we can get this person, but it may cost this amount of money.
Are we losing them to private sector jobs?
Yes, yes.
So it's not like we're not competing with other.
But they were coming from private sector jobs, too, yeah, every one of them's coming from a private sector job, right?
Finance, but not the HR person.
Well, no, the HR, his most recent position was private, one of the ones I'm looking at has municipal experience, but his most recent position is private positions, so, yeah.
Thank you for the update.
And, you know, we, we thought we had it, we thought we were going to come in here tonight and ask for a little more money on the finance director's side, and then it was yanked away, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Timmons?
Do we need, for the finance director, do we need to get a part-time person in here to cover?
We're using Ms. Thompson as part-time, and I don't want to try to bring someone else in here that doesn't understand the system, I mean, that, that'd be like training somebody to, just for short term, so Ms. Thompson is doing it now, it's difficult for her to do it, and it's getting harder, but it, that's the best way to go right now, because she's familiar with our system, and she is working part-time for us, several nights a week.
God bless her.
Yeah.
Oh, we appreciate it.
Yeah, we do. Any other councilmembers' comments? Mr. City Attorney?
I guess I just wanted to say, thanks is probably in order to Tina, too, who's really been staying late and busting rear end, trying to fill in for a lot of the day-to-day stuff that, you know, is not really necessarily part of her job duties, but is, you know, the bug has to stop somewhere, and so she's been hustling, and so I just, since we were talking about Tasha, I think Tina's here.
Yeah, well, Tina and Tasha are spending lots of late nights here, that is correct, so, yes, yeah, when you get an email eleven thirty at night, you know that they're putting in some long hours, yeah.
They do that on purpose.
They post-ate the check.
Time releasing this.
Well, I would have said that, except the ones I'm getting are coming from the copier back there, and I don't think they can change that one, it's hard to fake that one, yeah, yeah, but it was, yeah, and then, yes, the treasurer's responsible for the financials, but that's above and beyond what's normally done, so, yeah. And then a few other items, too, that, dealing with checks and all that, that she has to do on a weekly basis, seems like.
Did you have anything else?
No, that was it, thank you.
All right. Madam City Clerk, any comments?
No, thank you.
All right, I just do want to point out one thing, that the sales tax, if you look at the sales tax report that's included in your packet, the city sales tax is trending upward now, maybe that's due to Amazon, I don't know, but Amazon has started remitting, and if anybody's ordered anything off Amazon, you probably had to pay sales tax recently, so, just, it's trending up, so that's a good thing, so hopefully it'll continue that trend upward as more sales are collected. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move, second.
A motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.